All right, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock, so let's call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening, whether you're present in the audience or if you're in the electronic sphere. Al, let's start with roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on the City Commission meeting of Monday, September 14th. Benson.
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick.
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Mybaum.
Mybaum, present.
Mybaum is present. Miner?
Miner, present.
Miner is present. Moser?
Moser here.
Moser is present. Shram?
Shram here.
Shram is present. Weber?
Weber is here.
Weber is present. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson here.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon?
Leon is here.
City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter?
Denherter is here.
City Attorney Denherter is present.
You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of August 24th, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Moser moves the minutes.
Brunick seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the minutes? Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on the minutes from the regular meeting of August 24th. Weber?
Weber votes aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Miner?
Miner is aye.
Miner is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Minutes pass eight zero.
Now you have before you the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves to pay the bills.
Benson second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the bills? Anyone in the audience like to address the commission about the bills?
Dave, anyone on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments about the bills.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on the schedule of bills. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Miner?
Miner aye.
Miner is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Schedule of bills passes eight zero.
All right, now we have some proclamations, and the first one is Suicide Prevention Month. So whereas suicide is a preventable public health problem, by knowing how to start the conversation, listen, and provide support to someone in need, we can save lives. And whereas in 2019, South Dakota had the second highest number of suicides ever reported in the state, and whereas in 2019, 23.1% of high school students in South Dakota reported that they had seriously considered suicide. And whereas every year, thousands of individuals die by suicide, leaving behind their friends and family members to navigate the tragedy of loss. In many cases, friends and families affected by a suicide loss are left in the dark. Too often, the feelings of shame and stigma prevent them from talking openly. And whereas we all can be the one to help prevent suicide by learning the five action steps, which are asking the question, keeping them safe, be there, help them connect, and follow up. Now therefore, I, Nathan Johnson, Mayor of the City of Yankton, together with the City of Commission, do hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Month in the City of Yankton to raise public awareness, as well as to increase knowledge of the efforts that have been and are being made to prevent suicides in the state of South Dakota, as well as across our nation. And Commissioner Weber, I know you work in the mental health field. Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, I just appreciate the city taking the time to set up a proclamation. Suicide is a really serious issue in our, in our community and in our country. We are all under a lot of additional stress right now, and I just appreciate that you can call the, call it out and talk about it in a public setting. So thank you, guys.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Next, we have a Welcome Week proclamation. We have a couple members of Connecting Cultures here to accept this, so I'll read it. This week, we celebrate Welcoming Week as a way of creating home together with communities across the world. Welcoming Week is about bringing neighbors together across lines of difference to build relationships and work together on shared goals. And whereas Yankton is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who are not born here, but now call it home, Yankton's success depends on making sure that all residents feel welcome. New residents are a vital part of our community, along with our longtime residents, bringing ideas, starting businesses, serving in civic roles, working in critical industries, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we value. And whereas it is time to come together and build communities where every resident has the opportunity to thrive and contribute, by fostering a welcoming environment for all, we enhance the City of Yankton's health, economic prosperity, and well-being for current and future generations. Now therefore, I, Nathan Johnson, Mayor of the City of Yankton, along with the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of September 12th, 2020, as Welcome Week in Yankton. And I call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, and businesses to make the City of Yankton a more welcoming place for new and long-term residents. I think we can give a round of applause for that. So first, I'll ask you if you so desire to step to the podium and share some thoughts. I know you have some events coming up, and then we'll, I'll present you with the proclamation. We'll get a quick photo.
On behalf of Connecting Cultures, I would like to thank Mayor Johnson and the City of Yankton for declaring this week Welcome Week. We are very excited to partner with Welcome America to help Yankton become a more welcoming city. The vision of Connecting Cultures is to be the group that provides the consistent roadmap on how to maintain a network of meaningful connections between community leaders, organizations, and community members across all cultures within an ever-growing and changing greater Yankton. The group is rooted in three core values: advocacy, we believe everyone deserves a voice; education, we believe an educated community is a strong community; and celebration, we believe all cultures should be celebrated. It is through partnerships like ours with Welcome America and with support of the City of Yankton that Connecting Cultures can realize their vision and put their mission and values into meaningful action. We are looking forward to continued growth as we work to create home together with all Yankton residents and to foster a community where all races, ethnicities, and cultures feel welcome in this great city.
So hello, my name is Adriana Deanda. I'm from Mexico City. I came here 10 years ago, 2010, and I moved here in Yankton in 2012. And for me was, to come here was a very challenge because I didn't speak very well English. And the first things, I tried to find a job, and here we don't have many places to find a job where I speak Spanish. And was very hard to find a job. And then the second thing I did was looking for an English class. I found a literary ceiling console, and since, since that time, I've been studied there. And now with Cornerstone. And now I am with Connecting Cultures too, since they started. And I am very thankful and with all of this has happened because for somebody like us, they are given opportunity to show, to show everything we have, good things we have too, and we, we can, we can contribute to this community. They make me feel very welcome. Now I'm doing things I never thinks doing, doing it before. It's like be here. Oh, my goodness, I am shaking right now. As I'm thinking too much about if my English is perfect or not, but they are helping me too much. And, and I really appreciate it. They give me this opportunity, be here in front of you, and show you how important is to have places where we can go and learn about your culture because we are a people with a lot of needs. And, and I would like to, I would like to be part of this group and be able to help another people. And I feel, I feel very, very grateful because without them, I never do it, I think. So they pushing me to do a lot of things and good things, good ways. But it's very important to have a things like this. And I hope we can still doing it. And one of the principal things, I still study. I still learning. I still going to the school because everything is happening right now here. That gives me more courage to learn. And because I want to be able to help another people, and I can contribute to this community. And, and I don't know, I think so now, anything, anything is possible. And Yankton is a great, great place. It's a wonderful, and thank you so much because we have a lot of things. Yeah, and we have about Saturday, the Connecting Culture, we are gonna be at the market, nine o'clock to 12 o'clock. And we hoping a lot of people come because with the weather and COVID things, I, I hope a lot of people come in and join us. So that seems fantastic. Thank you so much.
So that's at Second and Douglas, right, as part of the farmer's market? Okay.
Douglas and Second, yeah.
Well, I just want to thank you both and for connecting, everyone involved in Connecting Cultures for the important work you do because like you've stayed here tonight, educating each other about our differences. To learn how we are also the same is so important, especially times like these where there's sometimes a lot of focus on what makes us different. There's a lot more that brings us together. And I think just driving around Yankton, I see more people from different cultures, different ethnicities around. And so it's evidence to me that immigrants are here, they're working, they're making this a more interesting and more strong place, a stronger community. And so I really hope we can continue on a positive path because we all know that there are, there are negative things that can happen with that too. And we need to work to avoid that, and you're an important tool to make sure that we do stay focused on the positive things and building things together. So thank you. And now we can get a photo. All right. City manager's report.
Thank you, honorable mayor members of the commission. I have a few things for you, so bear with me this evening here as I talk to you a little bit about them. I have here, and I wanted to be able to show the public, so I'm just gonna hold it here for a second, then I'll show you the voucher that will be in your utility bill next month. So we send those out Thursday or Friday. If you receive a utility bill in the City of Yankton, you will receive a voucher, which is for a free pass valid this month through December 31st at the transfer station. So you can take a truckload or a carload or whatever it is you have load to the transfer station at no charge. On the back, there's information about what we accept and what we don't accept. If you do not get a utility bill in the mail and you opt for the paperless, we have accounted for that, and you should be receiving one of these in the mail, independent of your, you know, online water, water and utility bill. So if folks have questions, they can certainly contact us. I wouldn't expect this probably until Friday or Monday, I would say, in the mail. We realize again that there are some people that are gonna bring a carload, and there are some people that are gonna have a truck and trailer. But our, our point was to give people the opportunity to be able to get rid of some items yet since we did not do citywide cleanup this year. So I wanted the public to be aware of that. If for some reason we do miss you or you don't have this, you know, give us a call. We'll, we'll talk about it. And I have to turn this back in. I don't get two. It's gonna be a bad time. I only get one, so. Any questions on the voucher program? Also, household hazardous waste disposal will be coming up in October. We'll talk more about that as we get closer. There is a charge for that. Many of you saw our sales tax returns. I won't talk about the numbers specifically unless you want to, but I did want to talk about the fact that despite the fact that we're in a global pandemic, our sales tax is going up. So that's awesome. It's unexpected for me. However, I think that's great. Our triple B was even up this past month, so that gives me reason to celebrate. I think that really is probably a lot attributed to some of the construction that's going on, both private projects and public projects, as well as people's own home improvements. So that's awesome. But it also speaks to the power of people shopping locally. I think a lot of people have foregone doing their kind of big shops in bigger market areas and have chosen rather than to go with all those people, to stay here locally. So I'd like to bring that forward and ask you to help me talk about that in the community just to really prove the power of if everyone shopped that way all the time, what a difference that would make, especially in an economic sort of downturn. If people, when we were having a different circumstance, were continuing to shop that way, I think we would be in a better position and be able to do more of those things that people like. So please help me visit about that. One place you could visit about that is Interchange. You probably received an invitation to join Interchange. We'll certainly help you communicate your interest if you're wanting to do that. Please let us know if you do plan to join. We have to be careful of quorum. So if we have five of you join, we wanna make sure we notify the public about that. Housing starts, good news from community development. We had 18 new single-family housing starts last month. That's a record. Dave Mingo reports that prior to that, our record was 17 in a month. So I don't know, I guess when, when things are, the chips are down, Yankton, Yankton raises the stakes. So I'm happy to see that happening. I've talked to you a little bit in emails and information I've sent you about towing. Our current towing agreement isn't serving the people that really need to work with it, i.e. the Yankton Police Department, as well as our dispatchers. What Ross and I have talked to with the Police Department about is not continuing with the towing agreement. It's actually expired, and asking the commission instead at a future meeting to consider authorizing towing agents. So these agents would be named, and that would allow our officers and our dispatchers to contact any of these authorized towing agents that you all deem to be authorized to do towing in the, in the City of Yankton. So that's where we're headed with that. Another step in that process would be to disband the standing towing committee. There wouldn't be a need to negotiate a towing agreement. If you're authorizing towing agent, that kind of takes us out as the middleman on negotiating prices, etc. So I just want to talk to you about that. I realized that we have a couple commissioners on the towing committee. Don't worry, you can be reassigned, and there's plenty of committees to be on, for sure. So, but if you want to talk about that at all, we can, either independently or collectively. We will have a full explanation and a resolution at our next, at our next meeting. But I think the towing agreement was the right thing to do when it was established, and it hasn't been working for us. So I think that it'd be nice to be able to go the road of naming towing agents, which is allowed by South Dakota statute. We have had some interest in pursuing a change in our ordinance as it relates to fireworks. Some of you saw that email. Wanted to remind you that I sent an email earlier today with some information about that. If somebody has interest in discussing that in a work session format, or if you'd like something on the agenda to change the ordinance, you can certainly change that ordinance. That's your purview. But I did tell the individual who was interested in that to, that I would bring that forward at a public meeting so everyone knew that there is interest in changing it. The interest in the change is that individual is seeking to be able to shoot fireworks off during the Fourth of July, private, private individuals. So not just our public displays, but allow people to shoot fireworks off more than just the novelty fireworks that we currently allow. So please let me know if there's anyone interested in making any other changes. We've also had an individual contact us regarding parking in the downtown, looking for, I guess, some different, I guess, different ideas when it comes to overnight parking, longer-term parking. The only thing I got back from any of you was that you were interested in us looking at solutions, perhaps for folks living downtown. I did not hear anything about interest in changing the way we handle overnight parking for folks that are utilizing the hotels or restaurants or drinking establishments. So if, if that changes, please let me know. Otherwise, what our staff is going to do is research some ideas from other communities for how to handle parking for those who live in the downtown. But if there's something else you'd rather have us do, we'll do it. And the reason why I'm not, I'm, we're just, we're trying to prioritize, and I just don't want to send the staff through a lot of work and research for an ordinance or get Ross involved if it's not something you're interested in really changing. So also told the individual I'd bring that forward to you at a public meeting. Talked about the transfer station. I didn't list a work session for a topic on your agenda, but I have had you set one. What I would recommend that we talk about and like to talk about is the situation we're in with our COVID-19 response in the Yankton County Jail, as well as a potential agreement with the Bonhomme County Jail to satisfy some of our needs. So I do think that will take the hour to talk about. Ross and I are gonna be sending you some information in the interim in between the two, two meetings here. I know you appreciate Dwayne's engineering here as much as I do. What is it they say, need is the mother of ingenuity? But that reminds me of an update I want to give to you. He is working on a quote for some technology improvements in this meeting room. So he is working on that as well, and Ross is talking with the state legislative audit if that's something that needs to be bid. We don't believe so, but we want to make sure we're doing everything according to South Dakota statute. So they're looking into that together. Also, something that is applicable is the workstations for our dispatch center. Getting those distanced a little bit so people aren't right on top of each other. They're in the dispatch for our first responders. So they're in, in need of upgrade anyway, but this is now something we have the opportunity to do that suits our response to COVID-19. I'm almost done. Bear with me. Lauren Hanson contacted me late in the day. Folks know Lauren. She's part of United Way. And she had some really good news. She asked that I would share with you, and I was really proud to do that. She contacted me and told me that back, I believe in May, our volunteer fire department was named the Volunteers of the Month for the, for the community. Well, what happens then? They have an annual, United Way has an annual honoring that they do. It's actually called the Pam Kettering Spirit of Voluntarism Award. United Ways Volunteers of the Month are nominated by their peers for their incredible work sharing with others. Well, maybe some of you don't know this, but our volunteer fire department has been actively working with United Way. They worked for 12 weeks on food drive-through distribution, setting up the barricades, distributing food, all the while still continuing with all the other things our volunteer fire department do, i.e. fight fires, but also all the other volunteering that we know they do around the community. So she is tonight, probably as we speak, awarding them with the Pam Kettering Spirit of Voluntarism Award. And along with it, something neat kind of happens. They are able then to make an allocation of a thousand, somebody's calling me. I'm declining that, excuse me. A thousand-dollar allocation from United Ways Community Impact Fund to a local organization nonprofit that they choose. So they'll talk as a group about who they want to allocate that to, and there'll be a presentation on that. So I mean, our volunteer fire department is phenomenal, not only at the work that they do, but they do so much in the community. They're so deserving of this. I'm really proud of them for that. Many of those folks are city employees, and I don't want to brag about them, but I'm gonna brag about them because, you know, that's a lot. going to brag about them because, you know, that's a lot. It's not just a go-to-meeting once a month, or, you know, do something once in a while. It's a consistent commitment of training. It's a consistent commitment of being in town, so there's, be able to respond. And there's a lot of really volunteer obligations that they do, and so it's a big commitment. So, if you know a volunteer fireman, or you see one, please thank them. Also, thank United Way as well, and just really proud of all the work they do. So, congratulations to them. Any questions for me? Otherwise, I'll let you get to your agenda.
How's the radio project going? I didn't read we had some troubles with that.
I'll let Dwayne.
I was very sorry to hear, Dwayne. You put so much work into that.
So, as you noted, we've had a lot of difficulties with the project. They have identified a couple of key components that they think will fix the majority of the issues we're still experiencing. The system was not working at a level that was providing public safety-grade performance. So, we switched back to the old radio system and have been operating on the old radio system that's 17 to 20 years old. If any of you are of the age where you remember about using CB radios and the squelch, well, the easiest way to explain it is the new equipment was generating so much background noise that the squelch for the system was so high that any portable transmissions that weren't in optimal commission, conditions, wouldn't go through. So, if John was back here with a portable radio and tried to key up and talk to dispatch, he wouldn't be able to get out. And as you can all imagine, that creates a huge public safety issue. And so, they've identified a couple of components. One of them's called a tower-top amplifier. They also have, are going to run sweeps on the cables, which basically tests the coax from the base of the tower all the way to the antennas up on the top. They're going to replace one of the antennas, the new antenna that's up on top, so that it meets the same specifications as the old system. And it's 9 dB gain versus 6 dB. That gives us additional in-building penetration, the ability to talk when you're in the school, or happen to be in the hospital, or in the R-Tech meeting room. And then, the third thing is, is when they licensed the new site, they only licensed it at 100 watts, and the old system was 280 watts. And so, they've put in an application to revisit the licensing, so that they'll be able to increase the power of the new site to the same level as our old site. You know, one of the goals of this project all along was, generally, we were pretty satisfied with the way the radio system worked, and one of the things that we wanted them to do is meet or exceed those expectations. And so, with all of those things in mind, you know, we've done a lot of field testing. Police Department and their patrol officers have been really good about giving feedback to the vendor, and we think we've identified the majority of the issues that will hopefully resolve the problem. And once those issues are fixed, we'll look at going live again on the new digital P-25 site, and hopefully, you know, moving forward. We got lucky in the fact that our old site was still operational, so we were able to just roll back to it. So, it's been challenging. I think in the end, it's like any other major project. There's a lot of moving components, very technical. I've learned more about radios than I ever knew before. Hopefully, we'll get it all straightened out in the end, and I'm still hoping that they'll get the project closed out by the end of the year.
Any other questions or feedback for the city manager? I know she had a lot to discuss.
You know where to find me if you do.
And thank you for sharing that news about our fire department. That's pretty awesome. Now's the time for public appearances, so this is when members of the audience, whether you're here with us or virtually, can address the commission about an item not on tonight's agenda. We currently have no one here with us, so I will go to Dave Mingo and ask if there's anyone on YouTube who has an item to bring to our attention.
There are no public appearance requests on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent item agenda. Number one is setting September 28 at 6:00 PM in the Regional Technical Education Center for our next work session, and as the city manager said, we'll be discussing some COVID-19 related issues, including our relationship with the Yankton County Jail, and perhaps the Bonhomme County Jail. We don't need a motion on that. Number two, Consideration Memorandum 20-166 regarding approval of the current list of volunteer firefighters per workers' compensation and South Dakota codified law requirements. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Shram, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wants to address the commission on this item?
No comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on Consent Item 2-2. Brunig.
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent Item 2-2 passes eight-zero.
Number three, under the consent item agenda, is a possible quorum event. At 2:00 PM on September 25, there will be a Huther Family Aquatic Center walkthrough, where all the commission is invited. There'll be no official action. Again, we don't need a motion on that. Number four, Consideration Memorandum 20-173 regarding approval of the current list of reserve police officers. What is your pleasure?
Moser moves the memorandum.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on Consent Item 2-4. Mybaum.
Mybaum, aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig.
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent Item 2-4 passes eight-zero.
And finally, number five, under the consent agenda, is at 4:00 PM on September 18. The commission is invited to attend a ribbon-cutting for the Ruth Donahoe First Dakota Fieldhouse on the Mount Marty University campus. Again, there'll be no official action there. Moving on to old business, number one is a public hearing of ordinance number 1039 regarding the public hearing to consider a rezoning from R2 Single Family Residential to B2 Highway Business, and this would be at 3,007 West City Limits Road. JTD, JTG Properties LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Shram, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission on this item?
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on Old Business Item 3-1. Minor.
Minor votes aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig.
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-1 passes eight-zero.
Number two, under Old Business, there is an A and a B, but Al tells me we can approve them both at the same time, if everyone's amenable to that. So, A is Second Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinance Number 1038, which is an ordinance to appropriate monies for defraying the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Yankton for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2021, providing for the levy of annual taxes for all funds created by the ordinance within said city. B is Consideration of Resolution 20-62, adopting the 2021 fiscal year budget, and directing the city manager to administer the budget as required by state law. What is your pleasure?
Shram, so moved.
Weber, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
There are no YouTube comments on this item.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on Old Business Item 2A and B. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig.
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-2 passes eight-zero.
Moving on to New Business is Consideration of Memorandum 2171 regarding Resolution Number 10, or, excuse me, 20-66, which is a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a B2 Highway Business District. This is again at 3,007 West City Limits Road, and JTG Properties LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Minor, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone?
Commissioner, I was just curious if, and Nathan, you might have got ahead of me on it too, but I was just going to ask Dave Mingo if he could elaborate, if anything, just especially on the last part of the recommendation, talking about strongly recommending that the applicant consider the aesthetics of the development, because it is part of one of Yankton's main points of entry.
That is the discussion that we have had and will continue to have with the property owner as he develops his project. The one image that didn't appear, I see in the packet, we got you two maps, so there was an image missing, was a rendering or architectural elevation of the project that is representative of what he's proposing. It's a multicolor building with the doors facing east, towards the commercial area, and obviously, to the west, across the railroad tracks, is Zoned Residential. So, we would hope that there's ample opportunities for some landscaping on the north side and the west side of the property. There's also going to be some stormwater management issues that need to be addressed on the property, and that's kind of good news from a development perspective, because as far as aesthetics is concerned, because it'll make some room for green space that can't be built out, or paved, or anything else. So, the drainage looks like it goes mostly north, so that's logically where I would assume he'll detain his stormwater. So, it kind of sets itself up to give him some opportunities to make something that looks pretty good. Again, we don't have a landscape ordinance requirement, or any architectural code, but we're definitely having that discussion with him.
Dave, there could be a commercial element to this, as well as the storage facility?
Yeah, that's correct. He's requesting this permit, so that he's kind of got multiple options on the site. The facility looks big enough to have several occupancies, and he has had some contact with some business owners that may want to have some commercial components in that location, also in addition to the ability to do self-storage.
Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
There are no comments on YouTube about this issue.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on New Business Item 4-1. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig.
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-1 passes eight-zero.
Number two, under New Business, is Consideration of Memorandum 20-172 regarding Change Order Number One, Final Project Acceptance and Final Payment for the 12th Street from Douglas Avenue to Mulberry Street, and the Pine Street from 10th Street to 15th Street Reconstruction Project. Final cost came in at $680,320. What is your pleasure?
Brunig moves memorandum.
Shram, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
No one on YouTube on this item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on New Business Item 4-2. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunig.
Brunig, aye.
Brunig is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-2 passes eight-zero.
Number three, under New Business, is Consideration of Memorandum 20-167 recommending approval of Resolution 20-63, setting new wastewater rates that will become effective November 1, 2020. And the proposed increase is 5%, which would be $2.13 per month for the average user. So, that would take your bill from $43.09 to $45.22. What is your pleasure?
Minor, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Our next three, our next two agenda items are also utility rate increases, so maybe the city manager could address for the public why we're taking these measures.
Sure. If I turn my mic on. Audible mayor members of the commission and public, it's that time of year again where we look at our rates and make adjustments where needed. You'll note this year that we're proposing 5% for wastewater and 3% for water and solid waste. The 5% from wastewater is, has to do a lot with the projected projects that we know we're going to be undergoing with our EDA grant. We have a match for that grant, but Al doesn't think we have a million or so dollars lying around again, so we have to borrow for that match, and we have to make sure that our rates for the revolving loan fund that we'll borrow from are 110%, cover 110% of what we borrow. As we move forward, this will be a multi-year project, and as we move forward, we are going to probably need to make ongoing rate adjustments. Now, that may be, like you see them this evening, a percentage increase on the actual rate. There may be a surcharge proposed in the future. That would be something similar to what was on the water improvement project. What those may be, I don't know today. It all depends upon what projects are determined to do, what are approved by you, and then what we decide to do long-term as well, with our response with our wastewater treatment plant. So, I can say that... with our wastewater treatment plan. So I can say that I don't anticipate rates ever going down. So I just want to throw that out there to be as transparent as possible. Beyond the cost of our projects, these rate increases also cover the cost of operations. You know, our expenses go up, and so we have to make sure that our rates can cover our expenses. Expenses are not just things like our people that are working there and insurance and salaries for those, but also things like utilities and equipment and electronics and all the things that we need to do our jobs at those various facilities. So I'm happy to answer questions about the specific rate increases. I will remind the commission that these are according to the budget that we just took a look at and just voted on. So these are concurrent with that. I think as we move forward, we'll continue to see our rates continue to rise for these utilities, particularly wastewater. And depending upon what happens in recycling, since we know we pay for that out of our solid waste collection in response to that, as long as that's a service that is important in our community, we will have to respond to any rate increases that are put forth to take our single stream. Happy to answer specific questions.
Any commission discussion?
One thing that I would just quick add is that with this rate increase, which I'm in favor of, we got to do what we got to do, it does cause our city to leapfrog brookings. So in the memorandum, it talks about the average wastewater utility customer, 5,000 gallon per month usage. So this increase does leapfrog us over brookings, for instance. We are a top 10 city, just barely, but we are in the top five with this approval here tonight of monthly expenses when it comes to wastewater bills that our citizens are going to be seeing. So just something to have in the back of our mind as we go into strategic planning next year, budgeting going forward. We all know wastewater treatment facility upgrades and a new plant are on the horizon. But we also want to make sure that we're maintaining our competitiveness as a quality of life city and making sure that what it costs to live here is competitive, as being a top 10 first-class city here in
Thank you, Commissioner Mybaum. Any more commission discussion? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments on this item.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-3. Weber.
Weber votes aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-3 passes 8-0.
Number four, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 20-168 recommending approval of resolution 20-64, setting new solid waste collection rates effective November 1st, 2020. This is a 3% increase, which is 69 cents per month, which would take the monthly bill from $22.92 to $23.61. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves.
Moser, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
There are no YouTube comments.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-4. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-4 passes 8-0.
Number five, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 20-169 in support of resolution 20-65, setting rates for the consumption charges for the city of Yankton Water Fund effective November 1st, 2020. This, again, is a 3% increase to the consumption rate, and that's 90 cents per month for the average user, which would take your bill from $58.11 per month to $59.01. What is your pleasure?
Brunick, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
No YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-5. Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-5 passes 8-0.
Number six, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 20-149 in support of resolution 20-53 regarding an authorization to apply for a land, water, and conservation fund grant for Westside Park, and that would be in the amount of $94,000. This would be for the 2021 and 22 construction seasons. What is your pleasure?
Brunick moves memorandum.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? This would be for playground equipment, correct, Amy?
Correct, in Westside Park.
Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission?
No YouTube comments.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-6. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-6 passes 8-0.
There being no other business on tonight's agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Shram, so moved.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on the adjournment of the meeting. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram.
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Motion on the adjournment of the meeting passes 8-0.
This meeting is adjourned. Take care, everyone.